Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. If anyone attending was like any amplify headphones, please let us know by raising your hand. All right.
I'll lead it. Let's all lead it. I'm glad.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
President.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
This council having late changes to the agenda. City manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item E three, the appointment of a deputy hearing examiner, resolution one-two-seven-seven-oh-seven-two-three. I'm requesting to place on the action agenda. Before number one is we're requesting a waiver of the three-touch rule in order to move this project forward quickly and have a second option for hearing examiner time upon the council's approval.
Do we have concurrence?
Yes.
Okay. Any other light changes? Also, have any board reports to share?
No board report, but I attended the ribbon cutting for the Veterans Village. It was very touching. Get together, I should say. Ribbon cutting today, there were some emotions out there for that are thankful that we have that. And now we can house our veterans that need to be housed desperately. So I went there today. Enjoyed it.
I attended as well. It was a very well-attended event and we're lucky to have Coyote Village in our community. Also, I attended our second annual first movies in the park and it was also a very well-attended event. I would say bigger than all movies last year. So it's pretty exciting. People really enjoy that. All right. Anything else? All right. Has everyone reviewed the items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Your motion?
I move to accept the consent agenda, please. Thank you.
Second. All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda is published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. The next is the presentation from Finance Director Mike Giddens.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. We're looking at Maids Financial Report tonight. So as we get a little farther into the year, our estimating is a little bit more accurate because we have more to base this on. So I always feel like as we get into this and in particular next month, when we look at June, it's really nice to look at that fifty percent mark. But starting out on page one, I just wanted to point out, first of all, that the net revenue less expenditures is in the positive at the end of May. And just to remind you, when we started looking at this back in January, it was unfavorable at a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars. So I think May is a result of just careful monitoring of the budget and watching expenditure, expend expenditures. No formal reductions, as you know, had taken place by then. So it's just the awareness, I think, that directors and cost center managers are really placing as a priority on the budget. So I was pleased to see that. It doesn't mean, as you, I mean, as you can tell, our, our revenue is well less, as I pointed out before, than our expenditures, but that's a good sign and I think it's a, a sign in a positive direction. The ending fund balance breakdown towards the middle of the, of page one shows an unreserved fund balance of three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven. And in January, that was at a hundred and ninety-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. So again, just steps in a good direction. I, you know, in our budget, those are positive amounts of money. They're not going to make us, but it's a positive sign and I wanted to point that out to you this evening. If we go to page two of the financial report, looking at revenue, property tax at the end of May shows that first half collections, as you know, were due April thirtieth. We received some of that revenue in the month of May, just because of when that hits our books from the county. It's at fifty-seven percent of budget. That's what we knew at the end of May. There's a correction to that amount that moves about a hundred and three thousand dollars from the property tax collections to the PUD excise tax line item. So overall, it's not going to change our revenue. It's just gonna drop that back a bit. When I was looking at the property taxes to be at fifty-seven percent halfway through is a little bit high. So that's part of the reason, but it also, I think, just shows signs that at least this segment of our economy is still positive and, and not showing any signs of any kind of a downturn. So at, at that, for that fact, I'm pleased and grateful. So we corrected that miscoding and you'll see that property taxes next month reflect that slight shift. At last month's financial report, it was mentioned that May's sales tax revenue is down approximately nineteen thousand dollars from twenty-twenty-two. Overall, if you look at where sales tax collections are year to late, year to date, they're down about two percent. So for us in such a large category, that's significant. However, I wanted to let you know, because I have the benefit of looking ahead and giving you this report a little bit in arrears, June sales tax revenue was not down nearly as much. It was from, as we compare that with twenty-twenty-two, it was down fifty-six-hundred dollars. So what I was looking there is to see is there's some kind of trend. Was there? I don't know what's going on exactly, but that made me feel a little bit more relieved that there wasn't as much of a difference. I'm still estimating that will be under on BNO tax collections, but that may be revised and not be quite as bad as the two-hundred-thousand dollars short we're showing right now. We'll see where we end up. I want to let this go a little bit further before I revise that down a little bit. But as I'm looking at the forecast, the revenue forecast moving into twenty-twenty-four, I'm not looking, it's not looking quite as bad as I had anticipated. So I tend to take a more conservative view. But it's still off. We'll just kind of see where that falls out. It's a little bit difficult to read it until a few months go by, few more months go by, because a number of our BNO taxpayers are annual payers. Those come in largely in January, so it sort of throws that amount up and need to let it kind of settle out for a few months to know for sure. On page four of the report, I wanted to point out that we present a general fund year-to-year comparison with revenue and expenditures by department or area. And this is a nice area to look at for comparisons to recent years. So this is one that I use frequently and I wanted to point it out to you in the public that it, it kind of shows that trend between our revenues, but as well as also our expenditures in, in all of our areas. But you can see where some of our budget items that I've spoken about that were just dramatically up in recent, in this most recent budget. It breaks it out pretty well there as a comparison. And then on page five of the report, we present a general fund comparison month to month for May from twenty-twenty-one through present. And it's helpful to see where expenses in this particular month are compared with past years at the same time. And so this is another page of the report that we prepared that I wanted to point out to you because I think it's helpful. We'll take a look at this a little bit more in-depth to next month because it's nice at that fifty percent mark to see where things are. But you can see where, you know, where we expect it to be, where it was last year. Now we're a little bit, Pat, twenty-twenty threw things off a bit, but now that we're past that, I think it makes it a nice comparison to look at that. And then on page seven, I wanted to point out, we're presenting the fund balances and as started with last month's report, a citywide listing by department at the bottom of the page of FTEs or full-time equivalencies of our staffing level. And this is as of May thirty-first. The only change between April and May is that we had a resignation in the finance department and so we're showing that as a one-point-oh additional vacancy, as you know, that was reduced in the supplemental budget. But as, as of end of May, when we had this data, that's where that stood. So we'll continue to update that and next month you'll see our supplemental budget come into play and where some of those changes are. But I wanted to make sure that we looked at that. We continue to work diligently on billing for our grants and contracts to make sure that the funds are, that we're receiving reimbursement. We were notified today that Department of Ecology approved a large reimbursement for the C Street landfill that we've been waiting for to bring that in. It's over seven-hundred-thousand dollars. So that helps our cash flow overall. So I was pleased to see that our staff worked really hard, both public works staff and finance staff to make sure those grants come in and that the reimbursements are documented and followed up on. So that's all I have as far as formally pointing out parts of the financial statement, but I'm happy to answer any questions. That might happen.
All right, comments or questions?
I just have one comment. Thank you, Mike, for your hard work and your team that works with you. I am not good with numbers. And so all these just like swirl around, but it, I know it makes sense. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Hopefully presenting it and kind of going through some parts of it. I know it's a lot and we put it together and we all in finance know what we're after, but I want to make sure that it's clear to both you and the public so that we're being transparent.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Right. We're recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. City manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about updating Title II of the Shelton Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Tonight I'm following up with a briefing you heard last week on Title II that reflected some changes and amendments to two-point-five-six, which references the police department within that title of the Shelton Municipal Code. Will these updates affect other departments? And as we look, look through the titles as some kind of grammatic errors, some changes in, 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 in the code that were necessary due to the change of the form of government from the commission form of government to the council manager form of government and just some general cleanup that was suggested by our city attorney. So as you'll see, the chapter two-point-one-two is the Department of Financial Services, two-point-two-two, the city clerk. And I guess of note there is the clerk would be appointed by the city manager rather than council. That's a change there. Two-point-two-four, the Department of Public Works is an amendment. Two-point-two-eight, the Community Economic Development Department, again, amending that chapter. Then two-point-seven-six would be repealing that chapter. That was the Public Works Planning and Development Services Manager, which I felt was fairly odd that it was codified to begin with, because this was a position within several departments and wasn't a department on its own. So I'm recommending the removal of that chapter in Title II as kind of a cleanup method. I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify anything we may have tonight.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone sign up for public testimony, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this? All right. Ever reading an ordinance number two-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-six-two-three?
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-six-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending Title II of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to city officers and departments.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to place ordinance number two-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-six-two-three on August first council meeting action agenda for the consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Nope. All right. We have a motion to second to place ordinance number two-zero-zero-nine-dash-zero-six-two-three on the August first council meeting action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. We resume our regular meeting. We have another item from city manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, again. So resolution number one-two-seven-six-oh-six-two-three is a memorandum of understanding with Cascade Civic Action Alliance. This is, I guess, what you might call a proverbial hoop to jump through, I guess, to receive some opioid settlement funds through agreements with distributors and suppliers of opioids and the lawsuit the state had against these entities. This, in receiving those funds, the state mandated that local jurisdictions form some sort of consortium alliance or decision-making, you know, group for receiving these funds and distributing these funds. So this was executed last, early this year, actually, for the first settlement funds. A new, a new agreement reads the same as the last one for the next settlement amount of ten-thousand-one-hundred-seventy-three dollars and two cents. It's needed to be executed and Mason County and Shelton are the only two entities in our region, right? There's no more municipalities within Mason County. So primarily working with Mason County as we did last time, we distributed some funds to Mason County Public Health for opioid abatement and treatment programs. We will bring back an agreement and some options later to council when we receive the funds on how to distribute those accordingly. But they need to go to that type of of programming per the MOU of Washington State. So tonight I'm recommending placing the resolution on the council action agenda for August first.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Does anyone in the audience have to speak on this?
Good morning. Dean Jewitt, lifelong Mason County member, city of Shelton. So a question that I would have, maybe Mark, you can answer this for me. So apparently we have ten thousand that we've got. We're going to get another ten thousand. I'd like to know where that ten thousand went, what entity received it, and then how it was used. And then also, was it of value and is it going to go to the same place, same people, same program? Or are we going to take a, take a, take a look at that and see if it needs to go to a different entity and have a better result? So I'd like to see an email back to me on what it was used for and how we did with it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? We have a motion. I'm sorry. Do we have a motion? We need a motion.
I move to place resolution number one-two-seven-six-dash-zero-six-two-three on August first council meeting action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion to second to place resolution number one-two-seven-six-dash-zero-six-two-three on August first council meeting action agenda for the consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Our last item is a resolution to appoint a deputy hearing examiner, community and development director Jay Hill. As the details.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to move this to the action agenda, if you don't mind?
That was the last one.
Yep.
Yeah. So we're moving into the action.
We'll, we'll forward to the action agenda at this point and we'll start with Mr. Hill to present this resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. This is a resolution to appoint a deputy hearings examiner. We have a code enforcement officer on board. We're working through a couple of cases and we need someone who has rapid and agile scheduling to be able to deal with some of these cases on the quick turnaround times that are kind of required for some of our abatements. So we were referred to an attorney who has experience doing this and interest in doing this. And it's very, very difficult right now, just as an aside, to find any attorneys to conduct hearing examiner services. We had one respondent when we last went out for an RFP and that's who we selected. And so we were very fortunate to find somebody who's interested and we negotiated a contract and we just need council's approval to appoint and direct the city manager to sign the contract so we can begin getting these hearings scheduled.
Thank you. Does anyone sign up for public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? All right. The resolution? Are we in action now?
Correct.
Okay. As for reading the resolution, sorry. Can we have a reading of resolution number one-two-seven-seven-dash-zero-seven-two-three?
Resolution number one-two-seven-seven-dash-zero-seven-two-three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, approving a professional services agreement with Inslee, Best, Bozy, and Ryder, P.S., to provide hearing examiner services.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion with the wave, the three-touch rule?
Mr. Mayor, I moved to waive the three-touch rule and to move the approval, move approval, resolution number one-two-seven-seven-dash-zero-seven-two-three, appointing a deputy hearing examiner and directing the city manager to sign the contract for services.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? We have a motion to second to waive the three-touch rule to approve resolution number one-two-seven-seven-dash-zero-seven-two-three, appointing the deputy hearing examiner and directing the city manager to sign the contract services. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Public Works Director Jay Harris has details for us about a financial acceptance for this Civic Center parking lot project.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director, Civic Center Park Lot. I gave you a presentation at the last meeting, a lot of great pictures about construction and grand opening, ribbon cutting, farmer's market, great thing. So a lot of good things going on in the lot over there. We expect a long service life, it's permeable paving, which comes with a few challenges with maintenance and that sort of thing over time. But overall, we should have a lot for decades to come. Looking forward to the park too. You know, I walk by there a lot. It seems like there's quite a bit of activity at the basketball court. And pickleball, if anybody's interested, the equipment, the net and do they call them rackets or paddles? Paddles, okay. The paddles and the little, we used to call them wiffle balls. Do they call those wiffle balls also?
Pickleball.
I need to get on with the technology here, obviously. They're available at the counter upstairs if anybody's interested to go hit the ball around a little bit. It's fun. So anyways, just into my presentation, there's been no changes to the resolution since the last meeting.
Thank you, Jay. Does anyone sign up for public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Would like to speak on this issue? All right. Ever reading the resolution one-two-seven-four-dash-zero-six-two-three?
Resolution number one-two-seven-four-dash-zero-six-two-three. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting the Civic Center Parking Lot Project as final and complete.
All right. Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number one-two-seven-four-dash-zero-six-two-three as presented.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I wanted to thank the Lions Club for taking on sponsorship of the court. And I wanted to thank the city for providing this great space for the citizens of this town, especially on Saturdays, the farmer's market, and it's been beautiful. So get out there and spend your money locally.
I saw it. And after the big fire that we had up on the hill, a lot of the firefighters who kind of needed to release some steam after what they were out there playing pickleball and they were having a really good time. So I think it's a really good asset for the community.
It is a great space and every time I've been down here day or night, it has been, somebody's been out there doing something, mostly basketball, but.
Yeah. If you don't mind, I will add, we receive fence bids and so we're scheduling fencing for these three sides that from the, on the streets and the former alley to provide an extra layer of security there and keep those pickleballs, right, Jay?
Pickleball is not wiffle balls or pickleballs.
Keep the wiffle balls inside the court.
So we'll be seeing it then some.
Before long. Thank you. Comments or questions? Any more comments or questions?
It's just a beautiful space. It really is. It just turned out really nice. Thank you very much.
All right. We have a motion to second to adopt resolution number one-two-seven-four-dash-zero-six-two-three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. We have another item from Director Harris. He has impressions about vacating Fifth Street, Tringrove, and Coda.
Good evening, Council, Jay Harris again. So the police department utilizes most of the street there. The intent is to fence the yard. We got a grant for that with gates. Going to leave the sidewalk open on the east air. I'm going to put an easement over the top of the vacated area for the utilities and for the sidewalk easement. And pretty much we need to, this is the fourth time I've been to you. We had two resolutions, two readings of the ordinance. So we've had a lot of conversation about this. So I look forward to you adopting the ordinance this evening and there's been no changes since the prior presentation.
Thank you, Jay. Donna, does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on the court? On Fifth Street, excuse me. All right. Maybe reading the number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, vacating Fifth Street between Grove and Coda.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to second to adopt. Comments or questions? We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. All right. City manager Mark Ziegler has information for us about updating the Shelton Municipal Code relating to the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. So as referenced earlier, Shelton Municipal Code, chapter two-point-five-six, referencing the establishment of the police department and its consistency with RCW thirty-five-a dot one-three dot oh-eight-oh two, I guess, is which reference it is for the RCW and just staying in line with collective bargaining provisions and civil service provisions and updating an area of the code that probably wasn't updated for some time, particularly when we transitioned from a commission form of government to the council manager form of government. So again, no changes from debriefing last week.
Thank you, Mark. Does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody in the audience? Right. Have a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, repealing and re-adopting chapter two-point-five-six of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to the police department.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt ordinance number two-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-six-two-three and as presented. So zero-nine, zero-zero-eight.
Two-zero-eight.
Zero-six-two-three.
You got it. Go ahead and redo that.
I move to adopt ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three as presented.
All right. Comments or questions? We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two-zero-zero-eight-dash-zero-six-two-three as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Our last actual item is a resolution to approve the city manager contract. Mark has details with his own contract.
I suppose I do. Thank you, Mayor. So as briefed last week, there's a contract in front of the council for adoption for the best appointment, I guess, if you will, resolution in front of you to sign, to appoint the city manager.
Last can.
That's right.
Thank you, Mark. Donna, does anyone sign up for public comment?
No, there isn't.
Anybody in the audience?
Dean Jewitt, Mason County lifetime member. I just want to congratulate Mark on his appointment. Look forward to, to working with him and I'm glad he's here. So good choice, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, maybe ever reading the resolution one-two-seven-five-dash-zero-six-two-three?
Resolution number one-two-seven-five-dash-zero-six-two-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Shelton, Mason County, Washington, appointing Mark Ziegler to serve as the city manager and authorizing the mayor to sign an employment agreement between the city and city manager, Mark Ziegler.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number one-two-seven-five-dash-zero-six-two-three as presented.
Second.
Right. Comments or questions? Mark, thank you for taking this on. I know that wasn't an easy decision for you. I know you've been, you know, thinking about it here for a few months and I, I think that you're going to be a great asset to the city of Shelton. You've already been a great asset for twenty-nine years. How many months and days?
Oh, wait, what do we, probably ten months, close to ten months, yeah.
I said thirty-one and you said, well, wait a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
But for, for your years in the city, you've been, you've been here through a lot and seen a lot and you've seen a lot of city managers and a lot of commission and council members and I, I think you're going to do a great job. I know you're doing, already doing a great job and welcome to the position and I hope this is a retirement job for you and so if you need anything from us, please let us know. We're, I mean, we're here to help. We can.
Mark, I'm glad to choose you and want to grow old here together with you and make sure that we have a beautiful neighborhood for everybody. So thank you very much, Mark, and you're, you're a big part of this community and everybody knows you. I can't even describe anybody who knows everyone else except for my neighbor, but uh, I just mentioned, mentioned somebody in the neighborhood and you know who that person is. So you are the person for this job and I'm glad to work with you and just let us know how we can help you and then get out of your way and do your job. Thank you.
Right. Any comments or questions for Mark? All right, we have a motion in a second to adopt resolution number one, two, seven, five dash zero, six, two, three as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Okay, Mark, you have a city manager report tonight?
I do tonight. Say it just got real. Is that, is that how you follow that up? Um, don't be for a moment. I'm not, you know, I'm not a speech maker necessarily and, and but uh, I would certainly want to take the opportunity to thank council tonight. Um, this is um, something I hadn't thought of, you know, hadn't aspired to and Gary Rhodes hired me in nineteen ninety-three here at the city of Shelton. Um, but it's an opportunity and there's a lot of challenges as well ahead of us. Um, they uh, I feel like, you know, as a community, as a council, as staff, they can be addressed head on. Um, with, you know, full participation, active engagement uh, from everybody and there's nothing instrumental here that we can't address. Um, I have belief in this community. I have faith in this community. I think that um, we have the ability to make this um, community better than it is now, which I think is, is great. Um, that's why I'm here. That's why I moved back here. That's why I came to this community. Um, there's, it's interesting, there's parallels from a former city administrator, Mike McCarty that, that started, I'm not sure when he started. I've got pictures from seventies though, of him, big mustache and full head of hair, probably like I had one, one of those days. Um, up at Huff, Huff Trails, Parks and Recreation Director and then Community Development Director and City Administrator later. And I worked for him in early years here. So it's really interesting. There's, there's a couple of parallels here. Um, at, at the city of Shelton. Um, I'm really, really feel fortunate to have the support of my friends and my family and people in this community. And it's, it's humbling how many um, people have come up to me and and congratulated me and, and said that I'm the right person for the job and not necessarily even knowing me, you know? But uh, maybe just by uh, association or knowing the name, but that's humbling. Um, I've got a lot of um, a lot of support there. My, my, you know, supports me a lot. Um, and she'll, she'll leave me alone at night, you know, sometimes, or we'll talk about work at times too, because it's not a job. You walk out that door at five o'clock, you know, and leave it, leave it here, right? Um, you're committed to this job. We're all committed to this job that we have to do. There's staff that are committed to this job on a regular basis and our community deserves that. So um, it's known, it's not something I'm going into um, blindly, right? That's, that's something I know and something I embrace and looking forward to. Um, I mentioned the staff a little bit. I'm genuinely um, excited to continue working with the staff we have here. The dedicated employees of the city of Shelton that feel so strongly about providing the services that are warranted and needed and deserving to our community. It's uh, it's really important to me um, that I support them. I'm able to be a resource for them and give them the tools uh, necessary for them to uh, work hard uh, for the community as a whole. So I'm really looking forward to that. Um, and uh, it's, it's really a, really a benefit of being here for so long is having, having a little bit of knowledge in a lot of different departments and hopefully be able to be that resource uh, for these folks that work so hard. Um, I want to tell the community that um, really, we're here to be engaged with. I'm here to be engaged with. I want to hear the successes, you know, I want to hear our problems. I want people to be solutions to those problems. I want people to um, share in those successes, right? We need to promote those in our community. Um, there's lots of opportunities to do that. Uh, we need to continue doing that. We need more people at these meetings. We need more people engaged through our um, upcoming um, comprehensive plan process. It's really important that we have people engage in that. Our community engages in that. It sets the framework, it sets the roadmap, if you will, right? You want to go from A to B, we need to know how to get there. And that, that comprehensive plan is going to be that roadmap that moves us forward. So any opportunity to engage um, engage the community to us, us to engage a community, I really want to take advantage of and promote that and take every opportunity I can. I'm available, accessible at any time uh, to anybody in this community. So I really want to make that clear that uh, that uh, there's, there's no limits to that, basically. Um, evenings, weekends, whatever it might be. Um, this is, this is a commitment uh, to this community. So, thank you so much. Um, so Business Expo and the Bike this Friday, uh, the city will have a booth right down on Railroad Avenue. Uh, we, again, I just talked about engagement. We want to engage a community a little more. Um, so we're going to have some information that, you know, is typical about water systems and streets and projects like that. We also uh, want to maybe educate our community a little bit and have a little trivia um, at the, at the site. So folks can learn a bit more about the city through a little trivia game. We have a couple of prizes as well. That'll be distributed for folks that participate in that trivia. So please get the word out, have folks come and engage city staff. We staff by various departments throughout the day and look forward to meeting everybody down on Railroad Avenue Friday. Um, I was up at the Veterans Village ribbon cutting uh, this afternoon as well. Tremendous turnout, tremendous project. I think it's going to be an asset to our community. I think it's showing uh, those that couldn't envision that prior to the construction, what it really looks like and what it will look like uh, moving forward. Uh, I think Coyote Communities is an entity that um, will certainly uh, take advantage of this opportunity and make, make a showing for what um, a project like that can look like in our community. Can serve those individuals that deserve it the most, which are veterans, they're homeless veterans. So really excited about that. Um, we have a study session next week um, with the F C S group, utility rate studies. So that'll be um, uh, in-depth information regarding water and sewer rates and uh, G F Cs. Uh, general facility charges will follow up. Excuse me, Jay, we changed that, didn't we? I'm sorry. We're going to come back with street standards. Um, it'll be the third study session on friends and group and street standards. I think we've refined that to a point where um, we can move that past the studies, study session for council to consider uh, in a, in a coming meeting. As you know, it's an in-depth project and in-depth topic. Uh, the easy thing to do would be say every development has trying to standards, no matter what, or every development has no right? Infill development is what we're talking about. That's the easy thing to do, but that doesn't, that isn't the, you know, isn't the right thing to do. Um, we have an urban environment. We have urban development. Uh, people do need these urban services and at what level is that going to be applied? So I think we've got great direction from uh, council. The previous two study sessions and we have a package to present to you uh, on the twenty-fifth uh, for your consideration. Uh, and further uh, further refinement and then we can come forward and give some certainty to our development community, to those uh, that are building infill lots within the neighborhood residential zone and help our staff out in um, in presenting that to the development community as well. Circle back around on eight, eight, F P S group will be here for the utility rate study uh, development. So we'll have in-depth discussion about how those rates are formulated, uh, the capital improvement plan that dictates and how those rates and their operation costs and then the general facility charges, how those trickle down to um, achieving that um, that infrastructure improvement that is so needed as we're talking about water storage um, issues right now. Um, that is essentially um, the, the major topic within the water fund and the, and the rate study and the G F C study. So um, and then on August twenty-second will be the first um, or the study session for budget, twenty twenty-four budget discussion. Uh, so we will be presenting preliminary um, budget and some preliminary requests. Um, year-to-date and projections and kind of directions and priorities where uh, we won't, we think that uh, we'll go and get feedback and consensus from the council where we're going for twenty twenty-four as we develop that budget throughout the next couple of months. So um, really important topics um, for those study sessions that uh, we hope to really um, move further with some input from the council. Um, I wanted to mention movies in the park again, uh, every Friday. Now come out, we moved the August eighteenth, the twenty-fifth because of staffing issues, but down in the park could be a little darker on the twenty-fifth and the eighteenth. So it'll start a little earlier. Um, starting a little, little, uh, little late right now, what, once it gets dark enough, but it was just after nine o'clock, about five minutes after nine, I think, when we started last Friday. So that'll get a little earlier as the, as the uh, summer goes on. But again, a great turnout, a great event. Uh, lots of people having fun, enjoying themselves uh, down in Nealon Park on a Friday night. So we're happy to provide that. And I thank our staff that are there until late evening, uh, taking down the screen and the equipment and providing activities. That wraps up my report for this evening.
And the movies this Friday is Holes.
Yeah.
And also uh, Thursday night, I give them a plug. Music at the park is Lady Drinks Whiskey. Yeah, any comments or questions for Mark?
What's the movie?
Holes. It's a kid movie. All right, no comments or questions? All right, what are general public comment? Max, can you put the instruction for public comment on the screen for a few moments? All right. We appreciate uh, public comment. I, I love to hear what's going on in your neighborhood and and uh, we do have some instructions for public comment that we'd like to uh, read.
Mr. Mayor, while you are saying that, we do have a sign-in sheet up here. If anybody from the public has had the ability to sign in at the front counter, if you would sign in right here at the table, um, we'll get uh, we'll get your document and those stand in public comment.
Right. Here's our, um, when called, approach the podium and state your name. And if you're a resident of the city, speaker shall remain at the podium and make comments and not approach the council or staff without express invitation of the mayor. Any related documents, printed comments, materials, and speaker would like to distribute to the council or staff shall be delivered to the city clerk in sufficient amounts. Seven copies at least five minutes prior to the meeting. Remarks must be kept in no more than three minutes. The council may direct the city manager to follow up on items that arise during public comment as appropriate. The council does not uh, engage um, with public. Um, the council will not allow complaints against an individual staff member or council member, any person's making personal or slanderous remarks who creates unreasonable disruption while addressing the council shall be directed to cease by the mayor. Right. Donna, do we would sign up for public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Donna Amarillis.
I'm sorry.
Okay. How about Jackie Jewett?
My name is Jackie Jewett. I live in Shelton, Washington. The uh, the uh, Shelton um, website lists the mission and the vision and the value um, of the city. So the mission statement says, the city of Shelton strives to build a strong community and quality of life. The vision say, the vision statement says Shelton is a community of active lifestyles. Account of accountability, accountable government, engaged citizens, safe streets, strong work ethics and inspiring leaders. The values of the city of Shelton, three words, community, accountability and stewardship. Underneath that, there are several headings um, with, with bulleted um, guidelines for this, for the city. So uh, the first one is clearly define the future. And one bullet in that is to uh, plan proactively. Community safety is the next heading. And under that, it says focus on code enforcement activities. Encourage pride in local neighborhoods and ensure public safety services are funded and staff appropriately. Part of uh, the concern with a significant amount of people that live and work in Shelton is their feelings of not feeling safe. So we can't dismiss a person's feelings because we can't tell them what to feel. But we want them to feel safe. We want them to be able to walk in a safe way, feel safe. We don't want to have to step over people to get where we're going. You know, we want grandmas and grandpas and grandchildren and children and, and everybody in this community to feel safe when they come downtown. I have talked to several business owners. I've spoke with several employees of those business owners along with several friends and family. And there is a consensus that they're not visiting downtown because they do not feel safe. Our commitment, the city of Shelton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dean Jewett.
Dean Jewett, lifelong Shelton resident, Mason County member and the husband of my lovely wife, Jackie Jewett. So if you haven't read the vision, all these different statements that she talks about, I highly recommend that you do. We've already had that conversation about what is in the ordinances. And if you can sit there and look at me and find out that you haven't read those ordinances and you don't know what's in those ordinances. Is that a dereliction of duty? Are you fulfilling your constituents, putting you in those seats? Uh, I can't help but wonder if the statements that were read by our mayor have a direct reflect on me. Imagine that. Uh, I sent an email to ask about the protocols and the policies for public comment. Uh, because I've been interrupted no less than four times by two individuals within the county or within the council. So there was no time to put back on my clock. Who gets to remind them of their duties and their policies and their procedures? The public gets three minutes. You guys have all the time in the world. Uh, I want to talk about the uh, the Veterans Village calling Carmichael. Do you know how many people from Shelton are in that community? I believe it's less than two or three. Do you know where the majority of those individuals came from? Kitsap County. Do you realize that when they, they pitched this idea? There was reservations and concerns about that to begin with. And so now there's an active phone list working to call people to have them come to Shelton. So now we're importing individuals and you know why we're importing individuals? Because we took state money. Were you guys aware of that? Was it in the contract? If it wasn't in the contract and we started taking state monies for it, does that change the terms of the contract? And do we get fair market value for the property in which that community now sits? And if we do, how would that affect our budget? And how could we better use those monies? Cause I'd sure like to get a piece of property and then change, change the terms of the contract and then go ahead and develop it and sell it. So just a question for you guys all to think about. Uh, a proactive approach. How many of you have reached out and talked to business owners like I talked about here a few months ago? How many people have taken a self-guided tour of our Brewer uh, campground? You know, we got a Kitsap uh, box in there now. You know what a Kitsap box is? It's a sleeping box. It's made out of plastic. We have one of those in our, in our park now. My wife and I were wondering if we could bring our new uh, Silver Street and park it up in there and, and camp out for a bit. Obviously, that's a facetious statement and I apologize. Uh, shopping carts, you know, we don't want to do anything about shopping carts, but now we've got thirty of them, forty of them running around. We've got seven of them impeding the railroad project that's going on. I had to reach out to Safeway Corporate. Have any of you guys reached out to any of the big box stores? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have Colleen Carmichael on Zoom.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Carmichael. I'm the Executive Director for Quixote Communities, Mayor Nesko, Deputy Mayor Schmidt and fellow council members. Uh, I would like to thank all of you for your support of the Veterans Village and we appreciate that we have the opportunity to lease the space from you and we are grateful that we were able to construct thirty units for veterans who have very deep need for the housing that we're providing. We do follow what is set forth by the county and the funding that we receive. And just so everyone is clear, we have no residents on-site because we have not been issued a certificate of occupancy from the city of Shelton. So, to say that there are residents that we've already looked at is not accurate. So, if you would like to know accurate information about the residents and about how we process through residents. Please feel free to contact me directly at my agency. And you can go to our website to find out my contact information, but I would prefer that we have factual information exchanged. And verified information so that there's no fear or misunderstandings about what we are doing with our agency and how we are conducting business on-site. As it relates to the park and what is going on at the park. There are many facets to outreach. Emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, transitional housing and permanent supportive housing. Those are all needed in order for homeless services to function properly. And we have some gaps. We are working to address those with all of the agencies in town as well as the city. So, I want to make sure that the residents know that the city is proactive and trying to find solutions and are interested in people who want to find solutions that will work. And if you would like to participate in that. Please reach out to your city council members, your city manager, or any of the leaders of the organizations that are actually working to reduce the number of homeless. In the county and in the city. And I thank you for the opportunity for speaking this evening.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one more person via Zoom and all it says was, looks like Skylar. You're on Zoom, sir.
You're on mute.
I mean, you're on mute. And could you state your full name, please?
I'm Dr. J. Shilerav and I moved my whole family to Shelton next month. I have prepared remarks. First, I agree with the commenter about safety. I get to Railroad Avenue on foot by taking Second Street. I don't like walking near Third Street. Secondly, last Wednesday, I went to court held in the same room where the council meets tonight with Judge Steve Greer presiding. I witnessed part of a sort of graduation ceremony. I'm no legal scholar, but it seemed like a promising program for real reform in the justice system. I'd encourage the council to explore and perhaps show support for these reform efforts in the judicial branch of government. Finally, and this is a bit more, last week I introduced the idea of a knowledge-based economy by quoting George Washington. Knowledge is the surest source of happiness. I want to elaborate to the council on how the city can increase knowledge and therefore increase the happiness of its citizens. One part of economies in general is the market. For example, the farmer's market is integral to agricultural sectors of the economy. And the stock market is integral to industrial sectors of the economy. In the knowledge-based sectors of the economy, the knowledge market is where people buy and sell knowledge. A Shelton knowledge market would look much like the Shelton farmer's market, but instead of jam and honey sands. There'd be photography and music booths. Rather than buying and selling cabbages and cucumbers. Mentors could chat with young adults who want to set short and long-term goals and make plans to achieve them. And instead of rhubarb and apple pie, there'd be people playing games and telling stories and chatting around a fire pit. I believe the Shelton knowledge market could be one part of a comprehensive solution to homelessness in Shelton. Because unhoused people have stories to tell. Their knowledge is valuable. In the knowledge market, knowledge is exchanged for something else of value. I propose that visitors to the knowledge market pay in the form of a token which is redeemable at the Shelton farmer's market. In this way, the city of Shelton would be facilitating the exchange of money for knowledge. Visitors to the knowledge market would purchase tokens and then they would use their tokens to purchase knowledge from the unhoused and other knowledge vendors. At the knowledge market. And this would allow the unhoused to purchase food from the farmer's market with their tokens. I now ask for someone's centered leadership or their appointee so I can talk with them about working to build the Shelton knowledge market. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the audience? I see Mr. Olsen is going to speak.
Mike Olsen, I live in the city. First of all, I wanted to tell Jay, the difference between wiffle ball and pickleball and the size of the well. And, and another thing I wanted to say was, Mark doesn't come by as integrity. Recently, he's had that his whole career. I, I had the story forty years ago playing city ball. And we were locked out of the gym for some reason and trying to get our cell phone. And run somewhere to pay for one, get work out of the house at seven o'clock at night and boy, he came right down and got us in there. So, it was a good choice. My concern today is, is I see the county has purchased another piece of property in the city. The old Harry Johnson machine shop over on, what's that? Parks Street, no, Front Street. It's another, another piece of property along with Olsen Furniture that's no longer giving anything back to the city. And so, I've also noticed that the old Bay of America building is, is for sale. So, I have a little concern because the county does have a master plan of, of purchasing quite a few properties around. You know, whether they ever will or not. But there is a map and they're, they're going to check. Two or three city blocks. And so, I've urged the city and you guys to reach out to the county whenever possible, to the chamber, to the. You know, the Economic Development Council and, and, you know, we got to have some heads up on this. If, if they purchase something across from their courthouse. You know, there is another prime piece of real estate that brings no tax revenue and no retail space in the city. You know, they've, they've got a huge piece of ground out there in their public works department that I don't know why they don't go out there and build other than. People are desperate to unload properties that are slow to move, I'm sure, in the city like that. I think the city could also look at. You know, why does the city buy some of this property? I, I know there's public-private partnerships that can happen. The Mason Transit took as an example. They're, they're, they bought the property down there, the new transit center. And it's also a retail space down there. I don't know why the city can't get into that. I know you, sometimes the old saying is you got to spend. The city can do something in the downtown to take this land before the county grabs. I like what Commissioner Boat is doing. He's, he's bringing it and, and the other members are bringing things down. You know, if we, if we leave the county taking this property. It's, it's just not going to go well. We're already losing money in property taxes and retail sales. So, that's my point. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. And no one else in the audience would like to speak? Does council have any new items for discussion? Nope. All right. Our next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, August first at six P M. We also have a study session on July twenty-fifth at six P M. This meeting is adjourned at six fifty-seven P M.